Going to call the Henry County Council meeting to order for June 23rd, 2022. If you please stand, Betsy will lead us in pledge and Susan with prayer. Because we have a fairly loud air system, I'm going to ask people to use the microphone when at all possible, and if you're at the podium, please use the microphone and there'll be a green light when it's on. Okay? Counsel, have you had a chance to read over the minutes from our last meeting, which was May 26, 2022? If so, I take a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved by Chad.
Second.
Seconded by Betsy. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six oh. Second item on the agenda is the Food and Beverage Bond Public Hearing. I've already called the meeting to order, so we'll call this hearing of the Food and Beverage General Revenue Bond to order. If I miss anything, Joel just added at the end. First, I'd like to thank again for the unteamed time, but they deserve it, the Food and Beverage Advisory Committee that was led by Landon Dean and Corey Murphy, who met eight or nine times between August of last year and April of this year. These are general revenue bonds that will be paid for from the Henry County 1% food and beverage tax, which we've been averaging over the last five years, $614,000 excluding the pandemic year, and it's been higher since then. This is a hearing on appropriation of the proceeds of the bond, once issued in the month of July. The cost of the estimated amortization of $3,390,000 principal for projects costs are listed as the Basketball Hall of Fame Expansion, $1,980,000; the YMCA Child Care Facility Expansion, $300,000; Memorial Park Upgrades, $1 million, for a total of $3,280,000. There's also a placement fee, bond issuance and contingency of $110,000 for a grand total project funding from the 2022 General Revenue Bond of $3,390,000. This confirms appropriation ordinance 2022-6 that I read aloud in its entirety at the May council meeting and to be signed by council members upon approval at the conclusion of today's meeting. The ordinance states an appropriation not to exceed $4.5 million. The interest on the bank bond being considered is set at 3.55%. We're estimated to have around $185,000 per year remaining after paying the debt service, based on the earlier described $614,000 average revenues from food and beverage annually. The total debt service payment will be around $435,000 a year in the first 13 years and $256,000 per year the last seven years of this 20-year bond that will be paid off in the year 2041. In 2041, we're expected to still have roughly $4.9 million balance in the food and beverage revenues, given that earlier stated 614 average in the last two years has been exceeding that. These numbers incorporate outstanding 212 and 215 food and beverage bonds approved in those years. Food and beverage funds will be the payment source for this general obligation bond. According to the timetable provided by ICE Miller, the closing on bonds and notice of same will proceed and be given by the end of June of this year. Are there any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? This is a public hearing on the topic. If not, any further questions of public hearing for the general revenue bonds? Do we need a vote?
Yeah, probably would have a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved? Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
And second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't expect any. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, ordinance number 2022-06, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds. No, that's what we just did. Three-year comprehension plan.
Can you have the number? Just get that in the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Well, this is my first public hearing on general obligation bonds, and that's why you're here. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the bonds that we just summarized and you've had in earlier emails?
So moved.
Moved by Chad?
Second.
Seconded by Susan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zero.
Make sure you sign that before you leave, because we'll have to get those documents together for the bond closing early next month.
That just me sign, or do they all need a sticker?
I think there's a signature line on it for all the council, yeah.
Okay. Counsel, signatures as usual. And Paige, you're up with a summary of the draft of the three-year financial strategic plan for Henry County.
Yes, thank you. Paige Sansone with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. So we are handing out the draft. It is 70 pages long. In the interest of time, I'm going to hit the high points, if that's okay with you. So first place I would like to start is on page number four. So you're going to see a graph at the top of the page. That graph is showing you net property tax dollars that you have collected and will collect into the future through 2025. The red portion of that graph is actually the property tax dollars you are not collecting due to circuit breaker tax credits. So if you see there in 2022, we now have the actual circuit breaker credits for 2022, although you're going to levy about $12.3 million of property tax, you will not collect $2.2 million, because that will be returned to taxpayers in the form of credits. So roughly 18% of what you levy, you're not going to collect because of circuit breaker. You know, said another way, if we weren't in the world of circuit breaker, you'd have an additional $2.2 million for your operation. So I just, I wanted to start there, because you know, your county is significantly impacted by circuit breaker credits. Yet, what you're going to hear me say is that you've really improved in a lot of places. You've got some good momentum, and let's keep that going. The second chart on that page just shows you that throughout the entire county, there's $11.6 million of credits returned to the taxpayers, and the county portion makes up almost 19% of that. So now, moving on to page five, there's another graph. This is really the comparison of your net assessed values and your certified tax rates. So since 2018, your property tax rates have increased by about 15%. Now, it's really nothing that you've had control over. I mean, you do get the normal levy growth factor that you get from the state, but it's not like you're just going out and just increasing taxes. What's happening is, over that same time period, your net assessed value has decreased. So when your tax base decreases, it takes a higher tax rate to generate those property tax dollars that you need to operate. So again, your tax rates have gone up by 15%, but your net assessed value during that same time period has decreased by 3%. So you know, what we're hoping and projecting in the future is you start seeing some growth in your net assessed value. So next, I'm going to go on, I'm just going to jump right into the general fund. Again, I want to keep this moving. I know you have a lot on the agenda. So if you turn to page 13, I'm going to spend probably most of my time on the general fund and then just hit quickly through the rest of the funds. Before I go into the general fund, you know, there's been lots of talk about inflation, right? So when we developed this, oh, I got louder all of a sudden. When we developed this plan, we always start kind of at a baseline starting point. So as far as expenditures, we've only built in a 3% or actually 2% growth in expenditures, and that's kind of where we start. Now, we may want to consider building in more growth in the expenditures, because we know costs are going up, fuel costs are going up, but in the same respect, your revenue really isn't going to follow that growth. So in the end, we'd probably be back at the same place. You're only going to be able to spend a certain amount within your revenue limit. So as fuel costs are increasing, you may have to reduce in other areas so that your overall budget is staying within, you know, a 2% to 4% growth. So I wanted to mention that. Also wanted to mention that we flatlined local income tax. So I don't, or we don't think that inflation is really going to have an impact on local income tax in the near term, because there is a year lag. So I think 2023, you could potentially see an increase in your local income tax. Now, maybe 2024, 25, maybe we see flatline or some reduction, but right now, in this plan, I'm just letting you know that we've just flatlined it to be conservative. We will get some information from the state, I think around mid-July, as to what they think the 2023 local income tax will be, so that's going to give us a better picture of how that might turn out. And I know this doesn't apply to the general fund, but when we get to Motor Vehicle Highway or the Highway Fund, you know, there's also been talk about suspending gas taxes. You know, and I think, you know, federally, I've heard them say they may suspend the gas tax. That is not going to really impact your revenue stream, but if the state of Indiana should suspend for a period of time the state income tax, or not state, the state gas tax, then that would have an immediate negative impact on your highway budget. Now, I haven't heard more talk about that, so I'm hoping they don't, they don't do that. I mean, I think it'd be better just to leave it alone. I know prices are high at the gas pump, I get it, but you know, also think about this. If you suspend some of those gas taxes, there's going to be higher demand. People are going to go buy more gas. Well, then what's going to happen? Gas prices are going to start going up. So you have to kind of weigh what's going to be good and what's not going to be so good about doing that. All right, so let's just get right into the general fund on page 13. So where I tend to focus on the most is line 19, where it says operating receipts. So you know, we've got a good basis, a good historical basis of how, how much receipts you get into the general fund. You see in 2020, you collected about $15.8 million. In 2021, it was right about $15 million. You do, you did get some CARES Act monies of about $1.5 million in 2020. That's why, you know, you didn't get it again in 2021, so your revenue is going down. Now, we're going to see it level out. In 2022, we're expecting about $15,889,000 as your revenue stream. If you quickly drop down to line 32, you can see that your budget is better than balanced, because we have a revenue stream of $15.08 million. Your budget, as you approved, is $14.8 million. So you're better than balanced by almost $250,000. That really just means you're adding to your cash reserves. Well, over the last two years, that's exactly what you've done. You've added to your cash reserves. So at the end of 2022, we're expecting that your cash reserve percentage is about a little over 20%, which is a good place to be. You know, you've heard us talk that we don't want your cash reserves to be less than 15% of your overall dispersments in the general fund. And at the end of 2020, you were at 15%, so you were right there at that floor. Well, at the end of 2021, you improved to almost 20%, and now at the end of 2022, you're going to be over 20%. So that's what I was saying about improving. It's, again, just trying to keep your dispersments within those estimated annual receipts to maintain those cash reserves. Now, going forward in 2023, you know, we've just plugged in basically a budget number for 2023. We don't have your budgets yet. We understand that. We just increased the cost by 2%. I know costs are increasing by more than 2%. We'll plug in your budgets, but what I want you to focus on is on line 19 again. Where your budget should be for the general fund, if you want a balanced budget, is $15,221,000. I just rounded up a little bit. So again, 15.2 million, that's your target budget for the general fund. So again, I know costs are increasing, but you may have to find some line items to reduce in order to accommodate those other line items that are increasing. So what, do you have any questions before I move on from the general fund?
Yeah, this is really good information, and I'm glad to see that you think we can maintain that 20%, but inflation, right?
Yeah.
I know you're mentioning it, but I don't even think we can begin to anticipate how that's going to impact our budgets. Do you have any specific guidance on that? I mean, I feel like the last two years, three years, we've been going through with a razor blade. I don't know what's left to cut, so I guess I'm asking for your expertise here.
Yeah, so, and I hear what you're saying. So here's one of the big reasons why we need to have those healthy cash reserves, because some, there are going to be some years where you're just not going to be able to cut enough to have a balanced budget, quite frankly. So you may have to dip into those cash reserves. I hear you. I've been here, I've heard you cutting. I know, I know it's been hard, but wow, look, it's really paid off, right? But I know, there's a lot of unknowns with the inflation, I understand. I would say do the best you can to keep within that 15.2 million, so that you can maintain that cash reserve, and if you can, maybe we can add more to the cash reserve. I don't know if that's going to be possible, but yeah, there's skyrocketing costs, and because you're a governmental entity, you can't just go out and increase your fees or charges for services, not to the extent that's going to help with these increasing costs. You're a governmental entity, you're pretty limited to the amount of revenue that you can generate, and that's, that's really the bottom line. So yeah, I hear your concern. That's why, again, it's so important to have those cash, healthy cash reserves. You know, when we were back in the recession, I was helping a few counties that had some very, very healthy reserves, and thank goodness, because they really had to dip into those reserves. Remember when local income tax took a nosedive, and we weren't getting our property tax settlements in a timely manner? So again, cash reserves are so very important.
Paige, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the first one of these you did when four of us came on board, we had like a 3% cash reserves in 2019.
Yes.
And you're saying we're anticipating over 20%.
Yes.
I remember then, you said you want a minimum of 15, and we looked at each other like, how is that possible?
Yep, I do remember that.
And I think it's a razor blade.
I do remember that, and that's why I really wanted to let you all know that, wow, you've made some great improvements. This is terrific. And, and you, we've got some challenges ahead, I understand, but this, you've made some, you've made some improvements, for sure.
Paige, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So just thinking back towards last year, I, it looks here like we were better than balanced, but you remember that we actually budgeted the whole amount, and then we did the additional?
Yeah.
So when will we see those updates? Will we have that by budget session, so that those numbers are more accurate?
Yeah, we do have the additionals built into this. Maybe not anything recent, but we, we built in the additionals that you did to correct your budget at the beginning of the year. We've got those built in.
So do we look better than budgeted? Because we got, we, our tax receipts were higher than we expected?
Okay, you look better than budgeted, because, well, one of the main reasons is because you've got a supplemental distribution of local income tax. Yep, and that is on line 14, and you got $403,000. So there you go. But still, hey, we'll take it where we can get it, right? But yeah, that, and we can't always count on that supplemental, and that's why we never build it in, but you got one last year, you got one again this year. I don't know if it will continue, but that's the main reason why you're balanced, better than balanced. So yeah, so again, the message is 2023 general fund budget, try to keep it around 15.2 if you can. If you have to spend down your cash reserves, try not to go below 15%. And again, once you start finalizing your budgets, we'll come back again and see, we have that one-page summary of where you stand. So we'll, we'll see what you need to do at that point. The next page, page 16, is your public safety local income tax. This fund is doing pretty well. I mean, you're adding to your cash reserves. What I would say about this fund is this fund can help your E911 fund. Once we get to the E911 fund, you're going to see that you're burning through the cash reserves. It can't, you cannot sustain that fund for very much longer, as it is. So we have recommended in this report that you maybe shift about $125,000 of appropriations from E911 to this fund, and if you needed to, you could shift even some, maybe up to $50,000 of public safety expenses from your general to this fund, if you need to. I don't see that right now as being a major need, but this fund, I think, really is going to need to help pick up expenditures from E911. So you can see in 2023, line seven, operating receipts, $1,281,000. So that should be about where your budget needs to be. You've got very strong cash reserves. You ended 2021 with 12%, but yet in 2022, it doesn't look like you're going to spend your whole budget, so we're looking at a 50% cash reserve at the end of 2022.
Do we know if this includes all the additionals we've had to do because of the out-of-town inmates?
So if you, if you've done those additionals just recently, we will need to get those from the auditor's office, but, or current? Okay. Okay. That's what I was going to say, we've got most of the additionals, unless you just did some, and we'll get, we'll get that information from the auditor's office. Page number 19 is the lit correctional rehab facility. Obviously, that's got plenty of revenue. It does need to back the bonds that you have in there, so I don't have any issues or really any recommendations for that fund. The revenues that we're anticipating for 2023 are almost $2 million for that fund. Page number 20, or page number 22 is your reassessment fund. So this is the fund where we kind of recommended you start burning down the cash reserves, and how you did that really was you shifted property tax levy from this fund to other controlled funds that needed it. So you can see at the end of 2021, you had a cash reserve of over 66%. We're anticipating that to go down to about 31% in 2022, and then about 20, over 20% in 2023. And we're just anticipating that, because we're just shifting property tax to the other funds, and then we're just going to have it to be net cash flows of zero going forward, meaning we're just, in this plan, we're just allocating enough property tax to this fund to cover expenditures and keep a roughly 20% cash reserve. So if we're looking at 2023, if you look at line eight, which is the operating receipts, it says $282,000, but obviously, we're anticipating you would spend more than that, because again, you're kind of burning down the cash reserve. So your budget should be around $315,000 is kind of what we're looking at for that fund. The next fund, and please stop me if I'm going too fast, I'll take.
I have a question for you on the correctional lit.
Yeah.
So we did budget a small piece of those funds that could be used for operational expenses, so I don't know how clear my question will be, but is there any way we could get more data on how much we should have as far as making bond payments compared with what, so we know if we could budget more of that for the same, or if we've gone too far?
Yes, I will talk to Jason about that. If I remember correctly, I think he was thinking having 150% coverage. You've got like 400, you had 400% cash reserve at the end of 2021. So it may be possible that you could use some more of this for operating, if that's what you're trying to do. I'll check with Jason with that to see what his thoughts are on, on that. Because I'm sure that would certainly help your general fund. Yeah. Page 25 is your park non-reverting. And here, again, we're just, we're basically allocating property taxes to this fund enough that it covers the estimated expenditures and leaving about a 20, 19% to 20% cash reserve. So we're looking at, if you look on line 10, operating receipts, we're looking at a budget that's roughly $496,000, if you want to keep it within the same sort of funding there. Yeah, so, and that, and that kind of goes along with what you've spent in the past, so I don't think that's a, I think that's pretty reasonable for that fund. Okay, the next fund is the health fund on page 28. Again, we did the same thing. We're just allocating enough property tax over to the health fund, so that it covers its budget and leaves about a 19% to 20% cash reserve. So on line nine, the total operating receipts for 2023, we're looking at about $523,000 roughly. So that's kind of the budget that we're, we're looking at for this fund. Now, you know, that's lower than the budget is currently in 2022. I know there were some additional appropriations, so if this amount is too low for the health fund, just note that we'll have to shift some property tax from other funds in order to cover a larger budget, if that's necessary. This is, you know, a fund that ended 2021 with about a 54% cash reserve, so you're using some of those cash reserves with the additional appropriation, which is fine. That'll leave you about 15%, 16%, but going forward, we just want to make sure that we don't fall below the 15% cash reserve. Page 31 is a grant fund. I, I'm going to skip that one, because it's basically, you get a certain amount of grants in, and that's really all that you can spend, so. Okay, page 34 is the E911, or also called the statewide 911 fund. This is the one where it, it would appear that you're going to start, you know, maybe possibly getting into negative cash balances, depending on what your budgets are. So look at 2020 on line 18, your ending cash was $362,000, you had a 66% cash reserve. Great. Ended 2021 with almost a 56% cash reserve, $340,000, but now we go into 2022, and your budget is about $150,000 out of balance. You are going to be using those cash reserves. Luckily, at the end of 2020, at the end of 2022, you will have a 25% cash reserve. That's great. But going forward, especially starting with the 2023 budget, we do think that you may need to shift some costs, some appropriations, from this fund to the lit public safety fund. It's just, you're only bringing in about 600, a little over $600,000 in receipts, but the budget, especially for 2022, was like $761,000. So there's a pretty big difference there.
So Paige, I'm assuming that the $68,000 additional appropriation that's on our agenda tonight is not in these figures?
It is actually in here, yeah.
It is, is it?
It is, yeah.
Okay, good.
It's in here. But was the 68,000 for something recurring, or was it just a one-time cost? Just curious.
Well, they're having such a staffing issue, they're ending up with a ton of overtime, is the problem.
Okay, gotcha. So, so there again, I think you are going to have to shift some of that over to the public safety lit. I think you're okay this year, even with the additional, I think you're fine, but I just, when you go in to start, start talking about the 2023 budget, I think you're going to need to do some shifting. Page 37 is the community corrections user fees. You do have some pretty healthy reserves in that fund. I'd have to refresh my memory as to what this can be used for, but if there's some one-time purchases, capital, or whatever that will fit within this, the statutory provisions of this fund, you can certainly do it. You ended 2021 with $325,000, which was 123% cash reserve. Excuse me. So again, if there's some one-time expenditures, cash reserves would be a good place to, to do that out of. The next fund on page 40 is motor vehicle highway. We have, for purposes of this report, basically flatlined the motor vehicle highway distributions. It looks like you're going to pull ahead over what you did in 2021. I think you'll actually receive a little bit more, but we, we flatlined just to be conservative. This is one of the funds that's really made some major improvements, major improvements, because I remember being here, well, last year or the year before, and it was way out of balance. But you can see at the end of 2021, you had an ending cash balance of 50% of your dispersments. So that's, that's great. And then going in 2020, 2022, you're better than balanced by over 100, by nearly $160,000. So I guess what I'm going to say with this fund, I feel kind of weird saying this, since last year or the year before, I was saying to cut, 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 you can increase your budget in this fund. 2023, we're anticipating revenues of $2,016,000, so that's on line eight. So I would say that'd be a good place to, to have your budget. Okay. Page 43 is the motor vehicle highway restricted. Now, remember, half of your receipts have to go to the regular highway fund and half to restricted, and it is restricted. to restricted, and it is restricted for specific purposes. So, you know, with this fund, you just basically have to pick out what you can from the highway budget to put in here. I don't know, it looks like you've been using it for road supplies, but you can also use it for matching grants for like the community crossings and things. But it is restricted to construction, reconstruction, and preservation of roads. So this has, you know, good balances in it, but it's just a little tricky because you can't use it for everything that you need it for, it's just for certain things. Page forty-six is the local road and street fund. Again, this is funded by gas taxes, pretty much, that's, that is the primary funding This one, it's, it's okay for the reserves to get down below fifteen percent. This is usually kind of a project-driven or used for supplies, but you do have good reserve levels here. I would just keep in mind that you bring in about seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, excuse me, allergies, and I have a scratchy throat, so. So just keep that in mind. You, you know, you have budgeted this year nine hundred and seventy thousand, which is going to utilize some of those cash reserves, but that's okay, because you've got some strong cash reserves there. Page forty-nine is your wheel tax. And this one, we weren't sure of what your capital plans were for two thousand and twenty-three, so we don't have any, anything in there yet, so it looks like your cash is going to go way up. So as soon as we find out more about your budget, we can let you know if it's going to be balanced or not. You bring in about one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand in that fund, that's what we're budgeting anyway. So you can have at least that, if not more, because you do have reserves, so if you've got some capital projects, you could certainly do that from, from here. Page fifty-two is your self-insurance fund. There's not a lot to say about that. This is one, we can't really predict what's going to happen. I mean, you, we're, we're expecting, hopefully, you'll end this year with about a twenty-six percent cash reserve, but again, can't really anticipate what's happening. We just want to keep an eye on this fund and make sure the reserves are, you know, at least sufficient. I'd like to see them around probably twenty-five to thirty percent in this fund, just because of the unknowns.
Yes, I noticed on this fund, you didn't do in, really, any increases in the receipts.
No, we didn't. And we did that just to be conservative, but, you know.
And just that two percent increase?
Yeah, that's it.
I think Kenan sent out an email that it was a five percent.
Okay.
Is what we're being told that I saw today, so.
Five percent, okay, okay.
We were told in the figures that it was a three percent, five percent.
Got it. The next fund is the cumulative bridge fund, page fifty-five. This is, as you know, a rate-driven fund, so your receipts will go up as your tax base goes up, because the rate just stays the same. So for, on line number eight is your operating receipts for two thousand and twenty-three, we are projecting three hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine twenty-six in receipts. You can budget more than that, especially if it's for projects. You've got the cash reserves there. We've anticipated that you would spend maybe four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Again, once we get your final budget, we can kind of work that through. You ended two thousand and twenty-one with about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars of cash reserve, so that's a good, strong reserve level there.
One of the things that I've been sharing lately, we have a cumulative bridge tax rate lower than most in east central Indiana, if not the lowest. Everyone looked at the AIC data book today, the eight counties that are in the forty to fifty thousand population, which is where they put us, we're second lowest out of those eight counties. So if we were to increase that, it would have a negative effect on the general fund, I would assume, depending on how much we were to increase that, because right now, we can't do one fairly large bridge.
Right, so you mean just increasing the overall property tax rate? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah. So because you're impacted so much by circuit breaker, that's the only thing that we would tend to worry about, it depends on how much the increase is. So if you increase your overall property tax rate, you're going to push more people to the circuit breaker caps, which for the taxpayer, that's okay, because once they're at the cap, they're not going to pay anymore. But for you, for your, the unit, your collection rate may come down. Right now, I'm saying you have a non-collection rate of eighteen percent, it may go to twenty percent non-collection, so.
So it's a catch twenty-two.
It is, it really is. But, you know, that's something that we run for communities all the time, even those that are hitting the caps and they have circuit breaker loss, I mean, there's projects that has to get done. So there is a trade-off. So we could obviously run scenarios to see, you know, if you increase by two cents, what would that do? Now, I will tell you, I was going to bring this up anyway, but you have some debt rolling off here pretty soon, that's property tax-supported debt, and that's scheduled to roll off actually next year in two thousand and twenty-three, and that means your debt service rate's going to go down by roughly two cents. If you just keep it stable, that's not going to impact circuit breaker, and it won't impact the taxpayer either, because they're already paying it right now. So I just bring that up, if, if that's something that you'd be interested in.
Is that the justice?
Is that the GEO bond?
Yes, the general obligation bond. I think Jason has been talking to you about it, yes.
It's the original, now, the Justice Center rolls off in twenty-four.
Yeah, you've got a GEO bond of two thousand and nineteen, I think that's the specific one. But in communities, I see where you just keep that debt service rate constant, don't let it drop, so that you can get some of these things done and not impact the taxpayer and not impact circuit breaker. So you've got an opportunity coming up, I guess, is what I'm saying, to, to potentially, you know, roll those bonds.
That's how they, did the middle school renovation.
Oh, thank you.
The one was going off, and they just replaced it with that renovation bond.
All right, so the next fund is on page fifty-eight, it's your Qume Capital Development Fund. This is a fund where the rate used to go down as assessed values went up. There was a recent legislative change this year, which is exciting to me, that you will never have to reestablish this rate. Once you establish at the max, it will stay at the max. You're very close to the max right now. The maximum rate on this fund is point oh three, three, three. You are at point oh three, three, zero. If you were to reestablish right now, you would only generate another maybe three thousand dollars. So you can decide if that's worth your time, but you don't have to worry about that rate coming back down anymore. We used to have to reestablish every two, three years, and it was just crazy. So now, we don't have to worry about that rate coming down. So you generate in this fund, what we're estimating at least for two thousand and twenty-three, generating about a little over five hundred thousand dollars, and that can be used for a wide variety of capital improvements, replacements, equipment, buildings, et cetera. You've got a strong cash reserve in there, so, so that fund's looking pretty good. And then we also have the rainy day fund, just simply in here for, you know, purposes of information. Compared to your budgets, I would say this is a rather low rainy day fund balance. If we can get through this inflationary period, and you get to a point where maybe you can start transferring monies from general to kind of build this up, that would be helpful. People always say, well, how much should we build up in there? That's really up to you. I just, again, rainy day fund, funds are just as important as cash reserves, especially through those times of unknown. If we have a big decline in local income tax, you may have to dip into this. So you've got two hundred and, almost two hundred and six thousand dollars, that's pretty, pretty low for, for budgets of your size. So, you know, if, if you can get to a point where you can start transferring monies, that would be, that would be great. The rest of these schedules are really just supplemental schedules, I'm not going to spend time to go through them, but I think, I just want to reiterate, you know, I've been here a few years now, you've made some really good improvements, and I know it's, it's, it's really hard during budget time to make all those cuts, but look, this is proof of, you know, all of your hard work has really paid off. And I just say, that's, that's great, and I look forward to working with you again with the budget.
Thank you. Can you put an ad out in our newspapers that we're doing a really good job and to lay Thank you for yours and Baker Tilly's.
Yeah, thank you.
You've been very helpful when we plan our budgets and advise us in the right direction so we can make wise decisions on the budget. Thank you, Paige. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Any other questions for Paige? This information is invaluable as we head into our budget hearings, it just, and when we get the one-page summary right beforehand, that's, that's helpful, too. Next on the itinerary, we have Crazy Hops LLC Tax Abatement. We have represented some Crazy Hops, please come forward. Corey, you're welcome to come forward, too, if you have any words of wisdom. Joel's on standby here. We received a letter from them explaining why they had not met the abatement targets, and we're going to open it up for you to share, summarize, to answer any questions of the council, and then we'll probably take a motion and a vote, yea or nay.
Sure.
What say you?
We're open to questions. Obviously, the, the big shortfall was our labor force, and so whatever questions you have. I'm Todd Kaminsky, and this is my partner, Ryan Hammer, and we're certainly grateful of the tax abatement, and we've tried to be responsible. As you've read in the letter, there were a number of things that didn't time out well for us, as with many startup companies and small businesses. COVID had a major impact, not only on our revenues, but also on our ability to hire laborers. And Ryan can elaborate a little bit more about that, but we're certainly open to whatever details you want from us.
Can you just hold on while those sirens are, we can't hear you at all, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're open to any, sorry, any questions you might have as far as our shortfall in that. Obviously, any farming operation is dependent, and you factor in that mother nature isn't always going to give you exactly what you want. As in, noted in the letter, we had two historic back-to-back polar vortexes hit in eighteen and nineteen, and then we had the longest, coldest, wettest springs in fifty-five years, back-to-back, which pretty much annihilated a good percentage of our crop. And then COVID shutdown happened, and we couldn't get employees. They were paid more to stay home than to come work. Ryan can elaborate more on that. He did all, the attempts at hiring and what we ended up with in the shortfall there.
Sure, yeah. So I'm Ryan Hammer, one of the founding partners of the company. We, in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one specifically, and in years before, we had been looking for employees. We'd used any different means we could find, either Facebook or ads put into the newspapers or temp agencies, so we, we'd hired, for example, Facebook, we put in Facebook ads for, for up to fifty applicants is what we had. Click the link and say they wanted to, you know, show up for an interview. Out of those fifty, we had about eight to ten people actually show up for the interview, and out of those ten, we actually only hired one of them because they were the only one to show up that day for work. So it's not an easy job, it is farming. I think, you know, it's hot out there right now, so it's not the most popular job in the world, that's not an excuse to, to not try to hire people. But one thing I, I will bring up, and, because I helped kind of put the plan together for what this company was going to look like in the beginning, and one of those things was taproom space and agricultural tourism. And after we lost Josh, he was kind of the driving force behind some of that, specifically because it was his family farm, and they had a, a facility there that we were going to use for, you know, events and different things like that. We did host a wedding at the farm. Unfortunately, I think it was twenty nineteen, fall of twenty nineteen, they had a fire inside of that barn. So that also hindered some of our, our progress we were making as well. So, yeah, I think that's a general summary of what we're doing. We've, we've lost some of our plantings, and we've been transitioning some of that ground into some new agricultural opportunities we found. We've got a company that's in Shelbyville that has contracted the twenty acres of hops that we pulled out of production this last year because of disease pressure issues, into fiber hemp, including an additional seventy-two acres north of the farm, kind of all tied together, to try and find a system that works. That doesn't include a whole lot of labor in that, in that process, but it's a way for us to diversify our portfolio for products, so.
Counsel, you have any questions for the gentleman? It sounds like the last three years has been a perfect storm. If it could go wrong, it has, including the pandemic, the, the hires, the workers, that so many companies are experiencing some issues, a great amount of turnaround, a great amount of people quitting, not very many applying, when you put out help wanted or posted online. But you've had some issues above beyond what some small businesses are, are facing. You answered some of my questions in the letter, but counsel probably have more questions for you.
When you were attempting to do the hiring on Facebook, what, when was that?
Twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, both years.
Is it going any better now?
We've abandoned Facebook. It's, we've, we, to get through some of our hire this year, we, we hired, we started hiring in February for April to start. We received an additional three to four employees through that time to make up for the shortfall, because we really need twenty-five or thirty to get through that stringing portion of, of tying all the strings and doing all the manual labor in the field. We actually hired or utilized labor finders as a temporary workforce, which was probably twenty-five percent more expensive than anything else, but that was about the only way we could find enough people to do what we needed to do. I will say, the, the core group of our employees, we've got nine full-time employees out in the field right now, and almost every single one of those is from Henry County. They're all local people, and, and word of mouth seems to be the best way. We've had a number of employees actually return from going and working other places and, that they really enjoyed working for us, so it's been a, it's been, it's been nice to see that. The struggles on the, on the hiring and spring is, is difficult.
Sure, it sounds like you guys have run into horrible, horrible luck, and also a labor market that's not providing you with workers. You would like to be employing more people, but.
Yeah, yeah, we'd really like to do some of the things we really wanted to do from the get-go as far as expanding. You know, we have, we've had a great first start to this year. Sales has continued to be driven really well. We hired a full-time salesperson, actually, starting last year, she was actually the one we hired out of all those fifty applicants. She got brought on for the in-field position, but then had sales experience, so we asked her to start in the field, because that's where we really needed help, and slowly transitioned her into taking over the sales full-time, and she's done a really good job at all that. So we're definitely seeing the growth that we've never seen before and needed to get to.
Thank you.
So, so on those nine employees that you said are full-time, what's the average wage you have on those?
I'd have to look, but right around fourteen seventy-five to fifteen twenty-five, somewhere between there.
And then we have four managers.
Yeah, there's, there's other, four other managers, myself being one of them. We've got.
Because the reason I ask is because the numbers just don't make sense on what you put on your report, because you're only, you're only claiming two hundred and three thousand dollars in income that you're paying out, but yet the nine employees at fourteen dollars an hour is more than that. So that's what's, because as, I, I chair the abatements committee, and my concern was that, you know, you and your original abatement request had said that you were going to pay one point seven four million dollars in salaries, and on your report that you turned in this year, you're only paying out two hundred and three thousand. Well, fif- fifteen second ideal of an abatement is the county abates the property tax in lieu of receiving the sales, the, the income tax that we were receiving for those employees. So that's the incentive for the county to do that. So that, as the chair of the abatement committee, that's what jumped off the page to me, was that you were saying you were going to pay out one point four seven, one point seven four, excuse me, one million, seven hundred and forty thousand, and on your report, you're only claiming two hundred and three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. So that's a drastically different number, and even that number you just gave on the nine full-time employees doesn't, it, it adds up to more than that. So I don't know if there was a mistake in your reporting, or, or what, because that's, that's where my question was, is the abatement committee, that's what jumped off the page to me, and that was my concern when I initially looked at your renewal this year.
Was that, is that- Is that, is that, sorry, is that in the PIMs reporting to the state? Is that where that...
That's the reports that you turn into the county.
To the county, okay.
Yes. Those are the reports that you turn into the county, which I'm looking at right in here. I think everyone has a copy of it on the council. At least, I can show this to you if you'd like to see it.
Sure. Yeah, if you don't mind.
Debbie, are you, thank you, Debbie. So that's where my confusion was, because the, that's, that's a drastically different number. I mean, you said you were going to go after, I believe it's 58 or 56, even with my old man glasses, I can't read it. And it says your actual was 30, but 30 at $203,000 is not a very big number per employee. So that's, that was my biggest concern and question as to how the numbers were so drastically off.
So a couple, three reasons. One is we were to, at this point in time, be at 110 acres in those original projections. With the market development and being undercapitalized and having the Mother Nature setbacks, right now, we only have about 45 acres in production. If we had all 110, and as we develop markets, it's not a commodity exchange. You've got to develop the markets. So as that, in developing the markets in the craft beer industry, they, the purchasers are, they, they need basically three things. As we heard the analogy, three things influence the value of your real estate: location, location, and location. The same thing in this type of crop, and especially crop, is trust, trust, and trust. Trust that you can consistently produce quality and quantity. So when we get big hits that put Henry County on the map, is Rheingau does a seasonal beer with our hops. That's, they're one of the largest regional brewers out of Cincinnati. And then we do the wet hops or seasonal hops for Three Floyds up in, and they are the largest volume producer in Indiana. So those things are giving us that positive history of being reliable and trustworthy as that we can produce quality. And the challenge is, is that being underfunded and then having the major setbacks, and then having a hard time getting the adequate number of employees. Until we, as we find ways to rebound and generate more revenue, and that, we've held back on putting in the additional 40 acres, and we lost 20 acres. So those are kind of our challenges in that setback. With the diversion into, into working with Danagro out of the Netherlands with the hemp fiber, we're also looking at needing more employees, too. It's an experimental phase right now. But the top of the hemp plant is used in a T, and they would need, they would use a facility like ours that is sophisticated enough and sensitive enough to be able to dry that down and process that for them. So that's the arena that I alluded to in the letter in saying these avenues are opening up. As in anything, there's no guarantees. There's no way. If we would start now, we'd be in a much better position than starting five years ago, six years ago when we did, when we originally applied for the abatement. One is, you know, history and the school of hard knocks. But two is, you know, who would have predicted back-to-back historic agricultural challenging years that are especially impactful on the hop plant because they're very moisture-sensitive? And, and then having the COVID shutdown as our markets were developing. I mean, literally, for three months, our sales went to zero because our, our, our customer base are the smaller craft breweries. And if you weren't in canned distribution, they're basically, you couldn't go to a restaurant. You couldn't go to that during, from May to August of 2020. So those sort of things, and that was in the, in the time when our labor force was intended to be ramped up for the seasonal. And so we were behind the eight ball, basically, is the shortfall. I can't sit here and legitimately guarantee. The only point in showing you those five points in that correspondence is that what we're doing to generate that need for that labor force, and certainly the opportunity to continue to, you know, make Henry County a go-to place on a lot of things. The agritourism setback, you know, was, was hard because we're, we're, as we approached, we've hosted big events for regional, for the Brewers Guild and things like that, which not only gives us credibility, but also gives us a go-to place. I mean, we can look at a lot of the agritourism, Fair Oaks Dairy up in, in the Chicago area. I think they bring in like three or four million people a year just to watch a cow be born and a cow be milked. Not that everybody wants to watch a hop plant grow, but it is exciting. We're the, we're the largest this far south in the United States practically, and we're the only one of this sort in a 300-mile radius. So that part has fallen short. Our ultimate dream in that agritourism would be a brown sign on the interstate, not, not just Indiana's Hall of Fame, Basketball Hall of Fame, but also, you know, Crazy Horse Hops because of its impact on that industry.
I have a question for Corey that he just set this up really well. So obviously, we're working on our county's branding, and we're basketball, and he's talking about agritourism, and that's obviously a growing field for us as well. Can you speak to the economic impact of what they're trying to do? And with regards, I know it's not tangible that we can measure it, but in terms of building the county's brand, you know, what that means for our identity, how, what that looks like?
Thank you for the question. When I recommended the abatement to the council back in 2017 and worked with these folks behind me, that's part of the rationale for, for doing, that was part of the rationale for doing this, was that they're one of the largest in the state. You know, I, I think you just said you're one of the largest.
One of the largest in the Midwest.
Yeah, you're one of the largest in the Midwest. So it puts us, it's already put us on the map. So it's a fantastic tie-in from a, from not only from an economic development standpoint and agricultural standpoint, and this isn't your typical agriculture. The growing times are different. It's not worse or better than corn or soybeans. It's just different. And so that's positive. You know, I think the other thing that's positive is, is from the tourism angle, if they can continue to move in that direction. I completely understand the rationale for this hearing. I could understand why somebody would vote to rescind the abatement. On the other hand, I think they've got a pretty compelling story that stuff was outside of their control. I think that the fact that this hearing was held sends a message that you all are watching the abatement. You are all watching it closely and taking it seriously. And so, and I, and I respect that as someone who works with you on kind of the front end of it. So I appreciate the balance here. I will say, in their defense, the tool doesn't really fit their model. And that's not their fault, and that's not your fault. They were a startup. We don't really have an incentive in the statute that is applicable, that is really fits a startup. And so I think that should be kind of plugged into your analysis as well.
It's interesting you say that. I was at the Republican Convention this weekend down in Indianapolis, and there were a lot of county council members there. And we were talking about how the textbook definition of abate, tax abatement in Indiana has shifted. What is, in black and white, is not what happens anymore, and it really should be updated. I know that's not something we can do right now, but, you know, it's, it doesn't quite fit anymore based on our current economy.
I know when you talk to the folks, the leaders, the elected officials in Wayne Township, Knightstown, they are very keen on what the positive attention it brings to have Crazy Hops, Boondock Farms, some of these things outside of the city limits that maybe doesn't equate well to a spreadsheet, but it sure makes the community proud that those entities are in their area. And I think you talk to any of them, they give a thumbs up. I think they would say extend grace because of the situation they described in their letter, which has affected practically every small business, but I think especially startups in the last two and a half to three years.
I wanted to say, too, that we have, as a council, looked for ways to try to help businesses that have had a hard time the last few years with the different grants and different things that we've done. So I personally would be okay with looking at this as an opportunity to try to help a business that had a difficult time, as we have many other businesses to the extent that we can, in wanting to see it, watching it next year to make sure that we're getting closer to those targets that were set.
Did you apply for what the business, help me out, those?
Resiliency.
Resilience, thank you. That was the word. The business resiliency that we had with CARES and went through the EDC and Main Street. I don't recall if Crazy Hops was one of the applicants to that. They were small grants.
Yeah, there was a small one for us to, sorry, there was a small one for us to help develop our online website and marketing to sell more direct consumer, which we did.
So you did tap that? Okay, good.
And we have developed that. And one thing I will say in this agritourism where we have put Henry County on the map, and this is really interesting. In 2017, we had a new president in office, and we applied for a USDA grant, a matching grant for value-added. And we were bringing in the most efficient custom-made equipment from Germany. And it was perfect fit for every other year before that, and we got an instant rejection because both the USDA rep and our grant writer missed that for the first time since the new president was trying to develop in U.S. manufacturing and U.S. labor force, they, they, they would not allow foreign labor or foreign equipment to be considered in this whole thing. So that was a quarter of a million dollars that set us back. And then in 2000, this historic thing was really interesting. When we were putting in the facility, we had Three Floyds coming down doing a quality control assessment. And we had one of our investors who was good friends with the guys with the world-renowned restaurant St. Elmo's, a Hughes Culinary. And we had tried to get them to look at an exclusive beer like they do a lot of their other things with their bourbon and those sort of things. And we scheduled a meeting to meet with them, and the Three Floyds people, while we were there, in their own private meeting room, none of the Hughes Culinary people showed up at their own, at St. Elmo's, at their own place. A year later, we get them out to the farm. They see our operations. Now, they bring every one of their, their beverage managers and all of their, their restaurant staff come through during our harvest to see that. Then they led the meeting in 2018 with, or 2019 it was, yeah, 2019. So it was 18, I'm a year off, so 17. So you just got a small synopsis of some of the, the challenges that we've had. But in 2019, once they came out to the farm, then they decided they wanted Three breweries to do this special beer. They wanted it now. They asked Rheingau, Quaafon out of Nashville, and Three Floyds. The reason they wanted to do it in Indiana, and they had to have somebody that could ramp it up. So now we have the meeting at their facility, and they hosted it, they directed it, and they selected it. So as you go through the international airport in Indianapolis, you will see, I don't know what happened there. I'm not talking any louder, but it feels like it. But I could show you a picture at their Harry and Izzy's there. It's Theodore Hops, brewed by Quaafon with Crazy Horse Hops in Knightstown, Indiana. And so those things are putting you on the map. And we feel good about those things, but we wish we had numbers to match with the challenges of Mother Nature and the economics of the whole scenario and the setbacks. And, you know, that's just kind of a, and, and, you know, Josh Martin passing away was a major setback because this was done on his family farm with him being part of the driving force. And now he's not there. And so the family is recovering, but that's a void that we can't fill, but we have to continue to try and drive it forward.
Counsel, I think you have enough information. Do you have any other questions than I would entertain a motion?
My question is about the motion. Are we, if we were in favor of extending the abatement, do we need to make a motion in favor or?
I would say yes. Would you agree with that, Joel?
Would be if you want to terminate the abatement, you have to adopt a resolution terminating the abatement. So I think either not adopting any type of resolution would continue the abatement in effect, or you could just make a motion to say, you know, you think they've made reasonable efforts to comply, and therefore you'd vote to continue, allow the abatement to continue. I think either way would be fine.
Okay. So thank you, Joel, for the advice. I will make a motion to continue the abatement, given your, the information you provided and the context, which I really appreciate. It helps me to better understand what went wrong here. And I think you ran into a tsunami of bad luck. I hope you, your business continues to grow, and you continue to put Henry County on the map. That's very exciting.
We have a motion to continue.
Second it.
And that's okay. Betsy, and then seconded by Kyle. A discussion?
And one thing I wanted to point out, and just so everybody's on the same page when they walk out of here. In your letter, you referenced the request to possibly further extend the abatement. Legally speaking, that's not a possibility. Just so I wanted you to make sure when you hear that motion to extend the abatement, you didn't think, okay, they're continuing it on another three to five years beyond its original term. Certainly, if you were to put in new improvements or new, new equipment, things like that, you could apply for an additional abatement at that point. But the council doesn't have the ability to further extend beyond, I believe, seven years, is that right? The seven-year term of the current abatement.
Yeah, and I guess my, again, I'll just reiterate my concern that the salary is so far off. And beyond that, I don't believe the additional construction that was in the original abatement has occurred either. Is that correct?
It has.
It has? Okay.
Yeah, we only had in 2007.
You estimated 1.4 million, yet your net assessed value is only 400,000, according to your report. Again, I'm referencing your report. But your original abatement said you would have a, you had a $700,000 initial investment and a $700,000 spent on improvements over the next five years for 1.4 million, but yet your net assessed value is only 435,674, I think it says. So...
I'm not an accountant, and I'm not the assessor. We're relying on the accountant terms. We have invested probably 3 million into the facility. It's a 20,000-square-foot facility with custom-made German equipment. So I don't know the shortfall in the assessment of that. I don't know how the tax is considered on that. But I understand your concern, and that's something that, I guess, needs to be looked at more seriously. With that, in that being said, we are the largest in a 400-mile radius of this magnitude, so.
Okay. We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Because again, I think you have the information at hand. You can, and the motion was to extend to the full term, the seven-year term, allow the abatement to continue, as it was written in 2017, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Harold's still hit not 5-1. It passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Coal Alliance, Ben Patient. You two gentlemen, I think, are coal alliances, and Corey, you can introduce the, and we have, we have the information here.
So last month, we introduced this project, received your permission to bring a preliminary resolution. I'll let Debbie assign the number. But it's a preliminary resolution designating property as an economic revitalization area and approving real property and personal property tax abatement for Coal Alliance Cooperative, Inc. The second whereas talks about the real property investment, real property being building. And so that's 8 million. And so that's based on cost. And then the assessment of that real property is determined by the county assessor, which may speak to the difference in the previous discussion. And then the third whereas talks about equipment, five and a half based on cost and seeking tax abatement. If you go to the second page of the resolution, there are two charts there. The first chart refers to the real property, so it's a three-year. I might be better off just turning this thing. just turning this thing.
It's hard to hear over that air handling, too.
So three years, and then the second chart there is referring to the schedule for the personal property tax, it too is three years. And then the, that last, be it further resolved, that last section says that if you adopt this, there will be a public notice put in the newspaper for your next meeting to hold a public hearing on this very topic. And then you have, you hold the public hearing and then you take a final vote next month.
And this, in writing, is what you described, I believe, initially at your, our last meeting?
Yes.
Except it's in black and white in front of us to review. Questions for Corey or the gentleman here from Coalliance? Looks like this will be one we have to sign a yea or nay, so. Questions?
I can only make a comment that the abatements committee met with the management of this and reviewed all of the facts, and at the time, we recommended that we approve this abatement.
Yes, you and Peggy, thank you both for being a part of that. So do we have, this is similar to last meeting? We need a vote, a yea or nay?
I move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Chad, and who seconded it?
Susan, thank you. Resolution to adopt resolution number 2022-06-23-004, and it's been seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Passes 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate your expansion. And again, he has a map here and it's south of the existing along the railroad tracks, east of Three, south of the Norfolk Southern, expansion of that property with a little cutout. So thank you. Yes, go ahead, because we didn't really put you down for an EDC report.
Just a brief report, because I know you've got a lot of other businesses.
While you're up there, go ahead.
Let's see here. Okay, Frost and Barrett aren't here, so come on June 25th, that's Saturday, come help us defeat Mark Cuban and the Dallas Mavericks for the Guinness World Record in the number of people competing in the game knockout. And you don't have to have any talent at all, right? We just need humans of all kinds, of all ages, to sign up, show up, and shoot. The goal is to get more than 701. You know, the fieldhouse seats close to 10,000, so we've got plenty of space. And there's also a lot going on around the fieldhouse in Baker Park, bands, the fire departments are getting together and have a waterball competition, there's going to be bands and food trucks, but this is an attempt at a Guinness World Record. As previously has been said, Guinness is sending an adjudicator, there is your word of the day, adjudicator, to come and monitor, and they're looking for reasons not, you know, so there's going to be some science to it. In fact, I think Frost and Barrett are at the fieldhouse now doing a kind of a run-through and planning. So there's my pitch for the bicentennial, that's Saturday, please be there, registration starts at 11:00, the first shot is at 1:00 PM.
Corey, how can we register?
We have a, we have a feeling that we're going to have a, you know, mass registration at 12:45. That's just the way humans work and we're going to be ready for it. In the same vein, on tourism, we launched our first video, it was 39 seconds, it's floating on Facebook. If you're not on Facebook, you can get on YouTube and search Henry County Destination Development, we have our own YouTube channel. That video was all locally done. So the script and project management was Wholeheart Communications, the filming was five after five productions, and the voice was Paul Fabric. So 39 seconds, it's a general tourism video promoting all the different assets of our county. Quickly switching to economic development, we have tremendous activity on our Shell Three active conversations right now with three different, three different potential clients, all have been to the building, some more than once. They may all go away tomorrow, but as you heard me describe this process, when you go from blind dating, filling out an RFI, not knowing really who you're working with, and when they follow up with questions, or if they want to come visit, that's always a good sign. And so, and there's a lot of other activity going on, but you have a lot on your agenda. So thank you.
Thank you, and I've seen that 39 seconds, and again, makes us proud, it was well done. Especially I did not know it was all done locally, but it looks like a very professionally-created production of 39 seconds. It does Henry County proud. So I signed up for the hoopla, but I've got to be in Bloomington, so somebody can take Shonda is not here and she said she had another appointment and she may or may not show up, Corey took her place. TIFF allocation, there was no excess assessed valuation except for the Northwest I-70 quadrant, and I think Chad sent something out a week or so ago, that there's 952,400 excesses, assessed access, assessed evaluation allocated. Chad, you want to say what that effect has actually on our budget out of $15 billion assessed valuation?
So basically what this does is this passes the entire, the RDC had voted unanimously to pass the entirety of this TIFF district back to the county in assessed value, so it basically will reduce the overall tax burden on the taxpayers from, you know, overall, and it will gain, you know, the county some funds. Where we would have held that into the RDC, now it gets passed back in assessed value to the county at nearly a million dollars.
Okay, great.
So.
Positive news.
We've, they've done this for the last two years since, since I've been on that committee, this year and last year, I think, because this was, you know.
Seems like this amount may be greater than last year, but I don't recall last year's amount, but.
I think three years ago it was half.
Yeah.
It was half that allocation area, last year it was full, and this year we can change it.
Yeah.
Appreciate the RDC doing so, thank you. Any questions on that? Before we go to additional appropriations, and first one is Butch, we already alluded to earlier, overtime, E911, 68,000, he sent out on June the 6th, a couple weeks ago, an explanation of all the overtime, and he gave a thorough description of what he's had to deal with, because we've had to have bodies in our 911 center in case of an emergency. And anybody have questions for Butch? It's pretty straightforward in his June 6th letter.
I move we approve the additional.
It's been moved by Chad.
Seconded.
Seconded by, I think, Kyle. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0. We do what we have to do, Butch, unfortunately, thank you for keeping it going. And manned. Coroner, we received information earlier, additional appropriation for autopsies, which has been higher numbers the last year or two, unfortunately, and we have an additional appropriation request from Stacy for 35,000. Any questions after receiving correspondence? I don't know when that was, but I do remember reading it.
I believe it came last month. And just a comment, Ken, and I know you responded to Stacy's email, and this has also come from the Health Department, but we've had an incredible increase of overdoses in the county, I don't know if it's bad fentanyl or what, but just really, really scary things that are happening, and that's going to impact our bottom line because we're going to have to pay for autopsies and toxicology.
Yes, and Stacy also got a commendation, accommodation, whatever you.
Recognition.
Recognition, I can pronounce that like Dillinger. For, I am. It's getting lame, we're getting punchy. For tissue donation from the state agency, and I sent a letter, and so did Bobby, and probably some of you did as well, appreciating that. I had a relative in Knoxville, 16 years old, that donated numerous organs and tissues that probably saved a dozen people's lives, so appreciate Stacy taking that action and probably saving some people's lives. I know I'm an organ donator on my license, I would encourage it, but that's each individual's So need a motion, 35,000 additional appropriation for autopsies.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Betsy, seconded by Susan. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0, thank you. ARPA update, I can tell you from knowledge, we had a meeting yesterday. I have it here. Do that while we're on the topic, and then I'll tell you a little bit about ARPA, our recent meeting. Most of this is, we've passed in the last month, number 19, I believe, is the new one, is that correct, Joel?
We missed the one.
Make my move, yes. The sum of number 19, your Exhibit A, the sum of up to 110,000 for the creation of a fund to support and administer workforce retention and recruitment program, as described in Indiana Code 36-1-29.51, in cooperation with the city of Newcastle, which has passed a similar contribution. Any questions? And this is another form we'll need to stick around and sign in a little bit. If not, I'd take a motion to pass this updated to ARPA expenditure. Motion to pass including number 19, which was just added.
Is this the first time we're actually passing, doing appropriations for these?
I'm confused about what he's on, because what I was talking about him doing was all of these, I have to, you guys, can you?
Okay.
Appropriating it into each individual line item.
Right.
Okay, well, right, so we need to, can I continue with the one that we also need to do, which is what we've done, rather than backing up?
No, back.
Okay, I'm a little out of order, but it all relates to the American Rescue Plan. All in favor, the only addition to what you see on your itinerary is the new one that was approved by the ARPA committee and Newcastle Council, and that's the 110,000 for the Make My Move. Do I have a motion to approve with that addition?
I'll make a motion to, oh, make a motion to approve the ARPA ordinance with the addition of the Make My Move of 110,000.
Moved by Susan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chad, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0. Now, back Debbie to the addition, the Coronavirus Local Recovery Fund, this is the first time I think we've done this, what exactly do I, just need a motion to pass as it's outlined on our itinerary?
You've already already passed it, isn't that?
Yeah.
But I have to add this and turn it in to the state, and you guys have to, it's additional appropriation, just like we said.
So that's why it's under additional appropriations?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Additional appropriations.
This is the first time we've done this to the state, okay.
And this is every penny of the first batch of money we got?
Yeah, pretty much.
Right.
Yeah, it's a vast, vast majority.
So I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations as listed in the itinerary that have been passed in the ARPA ordinances.
Moved by Susan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Betsy, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0, thank you. Now my real quick ARPA update is that we approved at the previous meeting, two weeks before yesterday's meeting, each volunteer fire department would get roughly 10,300 and a few dollars, and I believe the commissioners are going to distribute that at a volunteer fire department county meeting on Monday, which will be nice. Food pantries yesterday, this will be forthcoming, we agreed to give them an initial $10,000 each because they're hurting. People are hurting, the numbers are increasing quite a bit over the past year or two, and this, everybody gets the equal 10,000 for starters, and I'm sure they appreciate it and the people getting the food, because the cost of the food has increased as well. If you go to the grocery store, you'll know that, go to the gas station, you'll know that. So 10,000 each food pantry in Henry County. And there were two vehicles that were, are falling apart, and we authorized up to 60,000 for both, roughly 30,000 each for the building inspector and weights and measure to go out and find an acceptable, and Bobby's at the microphone, so she's got a footnote and asterisks.
I have what?
A footnote and asterisks.
Well, I just want to make sure everybody understands that that's what the ARPA committee has recommended, the commissioners, we didn't get it into, Joel, to add to the ordinance last night, so that won't come before the commissioners for a vote until two weeks.
So you'll have, you have a preview of coming attractions, and if they pass it in two weeks, a month from now, it will come before the council. So preview of coming attractions. Any questions about ARP or ARPA? The A on ARPA is Act, because it's a congressional federal act. Make My Move, we basically passed that earlier. And surveyor, Steve, you have a request.
Yes, I have two bills, gas for February, March, April, May, $624.57, and then we had to update the GPS coronet's machine that we use for the marking tiles is $834.60. It's a software renewal that we have to do every year. I have those two bills.
My question is going to, you don't have any budgeted funds that would pay for these kinds of things in your regular budget or any budget fund?
No, I mean, the only thing I have is the section corner funds, and that's not used for that, either one of these bills.
Ken, we're working on it, as we go through our.
Is there a reason why it's not being, you know, an additional appropriation? I mean, where is this getting paid from?
We don't know, that's.
I mean, is there a reason why, because all the others have additional appropriations?
That's what I'm used to, I, Kyle has a comp, you're right on, aren't you?
Go ahead, Kyle.
The motor vehicle expense fund they had was eliminated last year, and so was their software fund, and these are the two that we've come across. The fuel's going to be recurring and we're addressing these as we talk about budget for next year. next year, but I don't think there are many more, we're going to look through the rest of the budget. It's just a matter of not having any funds available with what they've got listed in their budget.
I...
I guess I'm confused on why not additional appropriation?
Well, I think that probably should be the recommendation.
Because we don't have any money in part time, does that mean we get to very part time?
So we had budgeted him, these items had been in his budget previously, and we removed them in hopes that he could use his perpetuation type of fund to pay these expenses, and he, and so I evidently, these are expenses he's not allowed to take from that perpetuation fund, and so he's bringing them back to us now because they're unbudgeted. So I guess our choices are to continue to pay them out of our own reclassification or to come up with some type of lump sum additional.
Well, I guess my question is, if we have part time, if we have to have part time, does that mean the business comes, you guys are going to part time away?
I'm so, I'm so used to the additional appropriations. Auditor, can you give any advice or legal counsel, any advice?
It's not like they're done as an additional, I've never known anybody, for example, usually they kind of say they have a lot of time to cost them for the rest of the year, and then they do an additional appropriation out, like maybe they do an administrative line, run them in red, until it's worth being in the year, and then do an additional appropriation? Or you guys can continue taking out any cost of the year?
I feel uncomfortable continuing to do this one at a time and making this exception if there's a...
You have an office over to start something.
Well, that's part of it. Chad, you were going to make a comment.
Well, I just agree with what everybody's saying, I think this should be an additional appropriation, I think it should run through the normal process that we all do, because it isn't the norm to bring bills to the council. This is, this has not happened, you know, as a norm, and so I think we need to look at an additional appropriation, because this, this is something we've addressed now before, and I'm afraid we'll just, as Kyle said, it's going to be a reoccurring issue, so it doesn't make any sense to continue to operate in this fashion.
So can we do that now, or does he need to go through the process for you?
They have to go through the process, they have to, they have to send a letter to the council, or it comes through me.
And we got a copy.
Yeah, and then tell, I advertise to take it, then they go to the council meeting, and then you guys vote on it, that's what they do.
That's the state adopted procedure, and so it'll get paid, it just may be delayed a few days.
It doesn't, he can pay it now, and run the, run the funds in the red, he can do that now, we can run it as long as we have a lot of red, like you said, for 30...
Okay. So, so you're suggesting...
Pay the bills now, and it's worth being in the year.
And just, just work through Debbie, they will get paid.
Okay.
I think we're opening a Pandora's box if we keep making exceptions.
Out of the years I've been here, I've never had to do it that way.
Okay, well, thank you. We're trying to get back to some consistency. I think you probably had that fund in the years past that you were able to.
Good evening.
You'll need to use the mic if it's not on.
Good evening. Is that loud enough? Okay.
Much better.
I've got two things, one an update, and the other is I wanted to make the council aware that Mr. Sterns has retired from the Highway Department, and we were looking for another applicant to fill that position. We advertised in the local paper, we've had two applications, and one, one, one is qualified, one is not, okay? The qualified applicant is requesting an additional amount of money to do the job. He's asked for 65, but that's negotiable. So I was thinking 62, start with. The question in my mind is, we were talking about Dale Sterns before, this is the actual position of Assistant Superintendent. I, if, if I can't find a qualified applicant, the position will remain vacant. I need somebody that can do the job, and if I can't get somebody that can do the job, work will slow down.
I have a question for you. So I've been part of some of these discussions and just thinking through, the best way to think about it, is it possible that this position becomes more of a superintendent position, and your job is more of a strictly engineering position that is treated as a special occupation?
That's, I'm a PAT now, so, yeah, that's, that's the way usually, I handle all the technical, the planning, paperwork, equipment purchasing, I do all that right now. Community crossing match and grant funds, federal funds, I handle all that. I also help Steve review drainage for new development. I've, I've got three set on my desk now to review, so that takes some time too, and yes, that's, that's a good idea, it really is.
Okay, so I just wanted to make some comments based on the job classification committee meeting we held, as well as the report from Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy. This report came out on May 4th of this year. Wagner took the job description that was provided by Joe and ran it through their classification process. They came back at the job is classified properly as a PAT 3. They, their points was at 450 PAT points, and it was classified properly. The reasoning that this came before is because to the committee was the, at the time, Joe was requesting that the Assistant Superintendent's salary be increased, and the only way that Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy said we could do this is if we took this position and made it an SO, a special occupation position. In doing so, then frankly, there is no limitation to the number of, the salary that the county can place upon them. They felt that the current salary of 51,015 was an appropriate salary based on the classification, that's what we have paid our PAT 3s. The, I'll just remind everyone, it's a job classification committee, there was a motion made, there was not a vote because the motion failed for a lack of second to increase the salary, and I'm fairly certain that's exactly what happened with the council, that a motion was made and it was failed to pass by a lack of second. My only concern is, and I understand your plight, but I could bring in, and I think Debbie, Steve, and Butch, I mean, I could bring Butch up here and Debbie, and, you know, nearly every department in the county right now that has an opening has a heck of a time filling it, no matter the salary or the position, because as a general rule of thumb, the majority of our positions are well underpaid. I think Butch made the comment last year, when we adjusted his pay, they could go to Pizza Hut, wasn't it Butch, and get a better paying job than they could answer 911 calls, which we've addressed slightly, but I bet you it's probably not much different than the wage they could still get at Pizza Hut. And so unfortunately, this is a global problem that the entire county has, but in the same breath, Paige just sat here and told us with the inflation, we're going to have to cut line items, we're not going to have a lot of extra money to throw at additional line items, so.
So I have a couple of questions for you. Like, when, when that was written up, was it written as an Assistant Superintendent? Because it seems to me that the way we've restructured the Highway Department, we almost need a full, I mean, a superintendent that's here every day, and Joe's position is now the special position.
I'll speak to that. When we change that over, and I think the commissioners are here, they can speak to that as well, in those meetings, it was assured by Mr. Copeland that he could handle the job of the superintendent and the engineer, and there would not, because that was the concern, is could he still do that job in a split capacity? And at the meetings that we had, that was certainly the understanding I took away, and that was exactly what he said verbatim, that he could, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the discussion that was held at the time, because we drastically changed that position, we entered in with an interlocal agreement with a separate county, and so that would be my concern now that we're already altering that just a matter of a few months into that agreement.
So what if, what if we say, well, that wasn't necessarily true? What if we do need a full-time superintendent, and we need a special, just theoretically, we still come out money ahead?
So I guess we would need to go back to the commissioners, and we would need to go back through the legal process, and we're probably, and Joel can speak to this, we'd probably have to involve Randolph County at that point, because it could involve this interlocal agreement, I don't know all the details, but I think that would probably fall back into the commissioners, because they're the ones who signed this agreement, and the decision would have to be made kind of more on their side as well, and I believe the council signed off on that agreement after the commissioners had finalized the details, but I think that's a bigger discussion and much more than we could decide ourselves right now.
The one question I don't know and can't answer, I'd have to go back and look at what the, what his current job description is, if his current job description says highway engineer, highway superintendent, to change that, then there's going to have to be a longer process. I would have to go back and look to see what that entails, because I believe in you, I think it says in your job description is both highway engineer, highway superintendent, so to make someone else a superintendent, we're, it's going to be a process to go back through. I'm not saying it's not a doable process, but it's a process, because his title right now is highway engineer, highway superintendent.
I think the, the important thing, if you were to adjust Joe's position, would be to make certain that the county remains eligible for reimbursement through the state for the portion, that portion of his salary, and I, I mean, the only concern I would have would just be make sure you don't give him a job title that would make him ineligible for that. But certainly, I think, you know, if they say that it's an engineer that is in charge of the county highway department, which I think in essence is what makes, makes him eligible, or makes the county eligible for that portion, I don't know necessarily if it would matter internally what we called him, as long as he's, you know, the ultimate figure that oversees the ultimate operation of the highway department and is a licensed engineer.
Would there be any legal downside to making the Assistant Superintendent an SO and make requirements for certain certification and education, because the Assistant Superintendent job that Dale Sterns did, I think was quite a bit different than what previous Assistant Superintendents, I'm, I'm wondering if the job description should change for the Assistant Superintendent versus messing with Joe's job description? What would be the downside of considering that?
I don't know necessarily if there's a legal downside, I think the practical downside you may have would be only what Chad alluded to, is that you may have similar requests, but from a legal standpoint, I don't think there'd be any problem with it.
So I just want to kind of bottom line it, I don't see giving the Assistant Superintendent a special occupation, because I don't think it is, but I do think that the engineer is a special occupation, is a role we haven't really had before, and to me, it's legitimate and an asset to the county to say we need a full-time superintendent like we already have, and now we are blessed to have a highway engineer, and I see a lot of benefit that's already happened from that. So I see it as a legitimate solution, not a workaround, which is why I would like to see it happen that way, but I do see that it might be complicated.
So that, that was the format that we used to have, we used to have a superintendent and engineer, because Joe actually filled the engineer role, and then Joe Wiley filled the superintendent's role, and so that was a, that was the previous way that that existed. However, when that was the case, the engineer's salary was, and I don't know the exact figure, but it was considerably less than what it is now. It was, I believe, around 60, and Joe, you, you held the position, you can probably tell us, but 60, 60 something, if I remember?
65, because I started.
Yeah, so it was, it was, so that is, that was the format we used to have, but it was a full-time engineer, and it was a full-time superintendent. It was full-time superintendent and a full-time Assistant Superintendent.
Did the state reimburse $40,000 at that time when you were employed earlier?
I, at one point it was 20, and then they changed it to 40.
Okay, so it went up from 20 to 40,000?
Yes.
Joe, was the recommended salary if the assistant was shifted to SO, was it 63? I'm working from last month's memory.
I, I asked for 62 for Dale before.
Okay.
So according to the Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy, basically, we have latitude to put it at any dollar figure, I think it was turned into them between 55 and 65, because that's what they have on their report, but as an SO, we have latitude to set that at any place.
Here's something else to think about. I'm currently 65 years old, will be 66 in November. I'm not going to be working full-time for years to come. One of these days, I'm going to be retiring for good. I would like to get somebody in so I can teach them what they need to know to be able to run that highway, like it should be run. Not that I'm leaving now or anything, but, but it takes a while to learn this. I have over 30 years of it, and I've been in like, what, four or five different counties, so I, I've seen a lot of different things, not only from construction, but employees, I, to me, when I run a highway, I set it up so that I've got my supervisors where they need to be. I hate to say this, but I've been in some highways where if I don't have a supervisor on the job, work doesn't get done. It's a plain fact. So we have three crew leaders right now, which is, which is good, okay? But I need that, that other person running those three and watching over the rest of it, including maintenance of equipment, so that, and, and I need, I hate to use this word, pusher. All right, I spent four years with a general contractor, and I learned a lot, okay? If you want to get things done, you've got to push, and you've got to get things, you've got to move down the road, and you've got to plan, and that one person makes all the difference in the world to me.
I think Dale cracked the whip.
Oh, he did? There's no doubt about it.
He made, from what I observed over the past year, there was accountability, and things got done. And working with you, I know that your planning and the things you do are probably top-notch. I'm glad we have an engineer, I'm glad we have you, I'm not talking personalities, I think things are getting done, and things are getting done well, I think they're improving. I hate to see things regress because of whatever. I think we could discuss this till midnight, because everybody has their own opinion, but I would like to have Joe answer any more questions you have, and I'd like somebody to make a motion, and let's get off of dead center.
I'd like to hear a list of options, what, if anyone like me would like to make this happen but is struggling with a good way to do it, if they have any other suggestions, because I think just since Joe's come on, I've seen him make good choices about equipment purchases, to try to maximize productivity, I really see value added, and so I think that $12,000 a year to keep that going is a good thing for the county, but I want to do it in a good way, so if anyone has ideas.
So I, I guess Joel could probably clarify this better, but from a job classification perspective, I think our only option is to change the, change the class of this, this position to an SO, to a PAT 3 SO, and then at that point, the, we would be able to set a salary that the commissioners and... and the council would have to approve the salary ordinance. Is, is that correct, Joel? That would be our only option we would have at this point.
That's probably the cleanest option within the existing framework. I guess I'll answer it that way. I mean, I suppose you could come up with your own new classification, I mean, outside of SO, and call it something else, and, I mean, that might make it excessively, I wouldn't say excessively complicated, but I think that adds complexity to it. I mean, I think that's the cleanest option, is the, and the, probably what would be the quickest option, would be to do that.
On, on Dale's payout, do you realize that it's almost like a four-year period before you get to hire, because you have to take all that out? You don't, you didn't have?
I would like to.
Pay line item?
I would like to transfer into there, through the council, to be able to hire somebody and get them in soon. I have the money to do that.
So that would require an additional appropriation, which we will not be able to do until next month, anyway.
Well, I, I'd like to do a transfer, is that possible?
It's an addition, we just.
Four thousand?
Since it wasn't appropriated, and it was more than the line item, I don't believe State Board of Accounts gives us that ability to do that, so we'd have to do an additional...
You pay the whole, Dale's salary on that. You pay the same pay. So if he has money that he can transfer, but it goes from a 2,000 to 1,000 on the line item, so has, before the county?
Do you have money in the salary line item?
Yeah, I, no, I, I don't have, I, I'm going to have to bring it from my, 4,000 to a 1,000, yeah.
So that...
But the money's there.
That has to be additional. No, yeah, just have to go through the counter.
Go ahead, Ken.
I shouldn't assume. From our conversations yesterday, because I have a monthly conversation with Joe and Angela and others before council meeting, this person that is qualified, that you interviewed, has a current job, I'm going to assume.
Yes.
Typically, they have to give a two weeks' notice.
Yes.
So, at any rate, our next meeting, I think, is on the 20, I don't know, whatever the fourth Thursday is, 20-something.
Could we hypothetically have a meeting on the morning of the 11th?
Yeah.
Prior to our work session?
We have enough time, we could do a special meeting on, at the end of our work session or beginning of our work session, and advertise that, yes. If that's the druthers of the council, it's possible.
Joel and I had talked about, you know, reasons for doing an SO designation, obviously additional training, and then Joel mentioned if you just can't fill a job at a salary because there's no one willing to do the work at that salary. Is that what you were saying?
We talked about some factors that you could possibly rely on and justify.
Right.
Can I ask a question about that statement? So what happens in other departments that we can't fill somebody at that salary is my concern? Because we're, we've got openings in the other departments that we can't fill at that salary.
That's, that's the entire concern that I have.
Yeah, that's it. We, we do that because we've got, you know, potentially in another office that we won't be able to fill, so then what happens?
We have, we have positions. I have one, and that one in this, in this building has one, and the first has one. We pay $31,000 a year. I can't even give anybody some fight.
Right, and you won't.
They can't give anybody.
Right. That's, and I think it, whatever problem we had with salaries is just getting worse quickly.
So when it comes to SO, and we ask, can we negotiate this because our department has a lot to respond to?
See, but the problem with negotiating that position, you're at a Comet III, right? It's a Comet III position. We have how many dozens of Comet IIs in the entire county? So if we raise the rate in a Comet III, 3 or 4,000 dollars, we're not raising 3 or 4,000 dollars, we're raising hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Does that, does that job position?
Probably a few.
I don't have a advocate here to join to an SO because we cannot find anybody to fill it that salary.
Yeah, I...
The question is, we can't find anybody to fill it at that salary.
I didn't hear you, can you repeat?
I said, if, if the statement is, you can change it to an SO because you cannot find anybody who works for what the money is offered, my concern is, then what? You know, but she asked that, but still that to one of them, and say now she could be an SO? And I'm just playing devil's advocate here, because I know that that's a question that's going to be asked.
Well, and I guess my only concern with the SO thing, and this is just the report from Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy, the folks we pay to tell us this, they did not find a reason to make it an SO. They said we could if we are so inclined, but they did not find a reason, they felt it was classified properly. Look, so, and I agree with Bobby 100%. I'm afraid we'd have a line out the door next month of employees that say, hey, either make me an SO or I'm, I'm going to walk, because Bobby York here can make $10,000 more to go run an accounting department at some local, small person that she's only running a million-dollar budget instead of a 15-million-dollar budget. And so, and then she, I just, I'm concerned of the Pandora's Box that it opens.
Well, and that's just, the, the thing about if you can do it in an SO, if you cannot find anybody to fill it at that pay, that's where I'm...
Then we'll de, well, then we'll deal with it at that time. My devil's advocate is, we've made progress, and we're going to rescind and backstep in an area that we are greatly behind other counties.
If it's all, if it's all three people, if the county judge, it is, we should take higher pay staff.
If we don't have this position, things are going to go the other direction, and we're already behind other counties when it comes to highway department. That's my feeling, that's my statement. If anybody else comes with SO, we'll deal with it one at a time.
The...
Well, everybody wants a raise.
Mr.?
Everybody in the country wants a raise. We're talking about the highway department in Henry County, Indiana. That's where I'm coming from.
All I was talking about was, the statement that said, you can make it an SO, and you cannot do that position at that price.
That would not be my rationale. I, would not be my rationale.
Then may I ask, what's your rationale is to make it an SO? Because Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy clearly says it's not.
I don't think the job description of what Dale did is what we sent in.
Uh, Joe was the one that sent the job description in. Would you like to read the report?
No, we're not getting into this.
It came from Joe.
We're not getting into this in this meeting.
Well, we are, this is what we're discussing.
No, we're not.
Joe, the, the, Joe Copeland was the one that sent the job description to Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy on May.
I think the job description he sent in was probably of, probably Dale Sterns's predecessor.
Ed, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy were not elected. When you have a problem, there are more, there's more than one way to solve a problem. We have a problem here in the highway department, we've been kicking it around for three or four months. We're either going to figure out a way to solve it, or we're going to figure out 17 reasons why we can't solve it. I think it can be solved. I think we deal with problems one at a time, and I don't think we say, well, if we solve this problem, we're going to have 86 more to solve. We solve this one, and then we deal with the other ones as they come along. Every one is not the same, every job is not the same. Our highway department is running very well, and we have a big chance of it not running very well. And the county really expects their highway department to run well. So we need, I think, to do whatever we can to make it run well.
So I guess my other question is, and please, no offense to the paper, but if you only advertised in the local paper, and we've only talking about a week or so that we're looking, that since Dale just retired two weeks ago, I mean...
Two, we, we, we held it open for two weeks.
I mean, so, and, and in the local paper, and this is a professional job, I, I mean, I run an office where we, we go to a lot of sources, like Indeed, or Monster, or some of these other job boards, and some of these things, to find a more appropriate amount of people, because, I mean, Mr. Murphy's already left, but he, we, we have this discussion often in our RDC meeting, we don't have near enough belly buttons in this county to fill jobs.
I don't, I don't think...
And so we have to attract outside town.
I don't think qualified people will drive that far for a $51,000 job, not with gas prices today, but that's my two cents. The applicant does have a Class A CDL, he does have an OSHA 30 certification, and he's first aid and CPR certified. He's worked in construction for years.
Can you read the certifications again?
Excuse me?
Three, read the certifications, I couldn't hear.
Oh, Class A CDL, which means he can drive a semi, okay? He's, has OSHA 30 certification, and he's first aid and CPR certified. He's, has other credentials on other jobs he's been on, so, but he's been in the construction field for some time, and he's worked on equipment when he was younger, so...
Are those certifications, any of them above what Dale held?
I, I think Dale had a Class A CDL. Yeah, he, I don't think Dale, Dale was OSHA certified, and I, I'm not sure he was CPR and first aid certified.
Steve, are you the liaison for the highway department? So you meet with Joe, you know how things are operating. Do you have any comments, since you're, it's, the commissioner's liaison? Any thoughts, or you want to stay out of this?
Well, I'd rather stay out of it, but...
I know you, you talk regularly with him, as I do. I'd like to see something happen, that's what I'm, I don't want to see that job vacant. I don't want to see any job vacant, but I think we've made progress, and I think we will go backwards if this is unfilled.
I agree.
That's just my opinion from being the liaison.
I think, if it was up to me, I'd give everybody in the county a raise. Financially, we can't afford to do that. The money that Joe's talking about giving, whatever position this winds up being, he already has the money, the money's been paid, it's been paid for all these years. If Joe hadn't caught the mistake that was made years ago, nobody would have even known about it. So, and it would have still been paid. So we're arguing over money that was already being spent for an employee, and then we lost the employee because we took the money away from him, and now we're trying to get it back so we can get someone qualified to fill that position. Obviously, nobody beat down the doors to get to that job, so the only way to get it filled is either to make that restitution for that money and keep paying, or don't fill the job. And I think the highway department's running fairly well. I've gotten more compliments on what we're doing with the roads, and yes, we get a ton of complaints. I like the idea that we're actually making progress. We have an opportunity here to fix one part of the county and make it run a little bit better, or at least run just as efficient. And I think that we need to do something with the other parts of the county, as we have time to do it. From what Baker Tilly just said with the part I heard about the finance and stuff, county highway department's doing very well. So obviously, what Joe's doing is making a difference here, and I think we should continue to build on that. And then we concentrate on building on the other parts of the county government that we can fix. So that's my two cents worth.
All right, well, we gave, we gave the highest raises last year, but when we gave those raises, no one in the world was anticipating 8.5 inflation rate. So when we gave a 3.5 rate, we thought, this is better than we'd done the past decade, but what happened after that? Things just kept going downhill. And so the buying power of our employees lost. And I, I agree wholeheartedly, we, but with the financial forecast that Page gave us, you know, our revenues go up 2%, inflation rate goes up 8.5%. We've got a good cushion, but we're not going to be able to give an 8.5% raise. We did to the sheriff's department, plus $5,005 essential worker pay, premium pay. That's a dent, but there's a whole lot of departments that got very little or nothing. It's, I understand where people are going to get upset, but the whole county's going to get upset when the roads continue to crumble. And again, we are, you know, they already are, we're all getting phone calls, but when we have 22 employees in that department that was 36 when Joe Wiley took over, that's a whole lot more loss than any other department in this county.
Okay, even though I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the SO position, even though I think it is very problematic.
Your motion was to approve the SO position?
Yes, make the SO position. And I think we're going to have to really look at wages again in budget session for everybody else.
It's been moved to move the position of assistant superintendent to an SO position. Do I have a second?
No, I, I have a couple of questions, because do we tie this to a salary? One, two, what reasoning? Because Joel gave two specific reasons and we, that we could do an SO position, and I didn't hear either of those qualifying factors in that.
I would say, according to Roberts, save that for the question. It's been moved for an SO position? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Who did?
Peggy.
Now discussion, Chad. What were your questions, and can they be answered?
So my questions were, is it, is there a salary tied to the motion? And two, what qualifying reasoning is given for making it an SO position? Because Joel gave two specific ones that I understood, either the certifications, or that require, that's required specialized certifications, or that it's because we couldn't fill the position because of a lack of interest.
I think that second is a weak argument that will open up Pandora's Box. Do you have a comment, since you made the motion, Susan?
Like to hear Joel's feedback.
Well, and I guess I want to say, I'm not necessarily offering these opinions that you just have to have some sort of legally justifiable position for what your vote is going to be. I mean, it's ultimately up to you. And so I guess, you know, Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy said that was one option you can have, it's ultimately your determination to make that as the body that's charged with establishing what the salaries are.
So I'll make my motion without clarifying the reason for the SO position. Do you want a specific salary tied to it today? I mean, you said you were going to offer 62.
If, I, I would like a number, because if, if I'm going to offer the fellow the job, I need to tell him how much it's going to pay.
So I'll amend my motion, I'll amend my motion to 62.5.
Whatever, whatever you, you think is, he said it's negotiable, he, he said 65 minimum, but it's negotiable. I asked him at the interview. 60, I think 62 or 62, I, I think it'll work.
Okay, it's, the motion is that we move the position of assistant superintendent to SO with a salary recommendation of 62,500, correct?
Correct.
And is that okay with your second?
I'll second that.
That's second, and any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I will vote aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, 5-1, approved. Anything else, Joe?
Yes, I wanted to give you a little update on some costs. We, thank you for, for allowing us to get the 660,000, that, that'll help a lot, okay? I wanted to give you an idea, with the increased cost in asphalt, I'm figuring that 200 and around, $243,000 of that 660 went to increase in asphalt costs. So, and then I turned around and added four roads. Shirley Road, Kentland Avenue, which is a short section, 200 West, between south of 300 North to 400 North, and some strip paving and double seal on 700 West, south of 36. It's in horrible condition. So I was able to add that. Hopefully, we can get it completed by the end of the... by the end of the season. They're paving up in the northeast now. They're on Three Hundred North. And they've got some solid paving and strip paving, and then they're gonna head north and do some more strip paving. We've got to get a lot of strip paving done throughout the county so we can start our chip seal program. Chip seal program will be started hopefully the eleventh of July is what I'm hoping for, okay? So they're working a little overtime to get... See if they can make that happen. And then when we start the chip seal, we have an awful lot to do, so we're gonna be ordering quite a bit of asphalt per day. Usually, some counties do two tankers a day, which is a little over five thousand gallons. I'm gonna see if we can be doing three tankers a day, fifteen thousand or more gallons per day on the road, so... So we can get done... We need to be done hopefully around September first because you can't put chip seal down when it's cold.
And you can go into November with paving, asphalt, hot asphalt, right?
Right. We'll go back to paving once we get the chip seal completed, yeah.
I know we had a lot of complaints last year on Three Hundred North, so I... It's third world.
It was one of the worst roads I've seen.
Oh, it's...
To the east.
I... I wouldn't drive a good vehicle down Three Hundred North. And the other one, when I was out campaigning, was the eight... Eight Fifty South, north of Knightstown Lake. And we talked about that. You have it down for strip paving and double seal. It's totally like Three Hundred.
Oh, yeah, over there.
It's just a wreck.
West County line.
So did you add about five miles, it looked like, from the map that you shared with me yesterday with the six hundred and sixty thousand saying? And I told the... I wrote the council saying probably half of that six hundred and sixty went to increased cost of material.
Yeah, two... Yeah. I figured I... About two seventy-four, but two seventy-three. So, also, community crossings. EMB paving has started. They started on Dublin Pike. So hopefully, they keep moving. They had a... I got a call and they had a crew free to be able to come over here and begin, so they started actually Wednesday, and they're hoping to start paving tomorrow. I don't know if they got far enough along with the prep or not, so... So it's... They're moving. Hopefully, get our million dollars soon.
So they're not waiting till late October, November, like Milestone did the last couple of years?
Not now. They must have... They must have room for work now, so they're moving, which is good.
I know last night in the commissioner's meeting, something was said about EB increasing their contract cost four percent. Their bid cost four percent?
Yeah, it's not... It's not our bid.
And I assume a lot of that's asphalt.
No, that's... I don't believe that'd be legal.
Okay, well, the world in which we live.
Thank you.
Thank you. Budget hearings are gonna be the challenge of a century. Okay. Any public comments? The one thing I added to the itinerary at the beginning, any public comments? Okay, I have a few comments. Some of the bicentennial, again, Henry County's two hundred years old, and Carrie and Scott have other things that they're working on. Sounds like they're setting up for Saturday's hoopla. Some of the things that have been going on, some of you I've seen at some of these events, some of these events I've attended, some not. Jack's Donut Hole Eating Contest was well-attended on the fourteen-hundred. They had a concert afterwards, Memorial Day Parade. Many of us were in that. The Art Association Tuesday Film Talkies have been a hit. June first, the Henry County Birthday Party Worship Service. June fourth, a Time Capsule opening in Cruz Inn, along with the Township Torch Run, Middletown Lions Fair and Parade. Recently, the Historical Museum Ice Cream Social, the Concert Series last Friday at the Arts Park with Josh Kaufman, who was a voice winner in their season six. June eighteenth, the Beard Contest and Bark in the Park, which I did attend with my doggies. Juneteenth Celebration this past weekend. Also on Sunday was a fishing derby at the Memorial Park. There's been a golf tournament this week. Fourth Friday is tomorrow. Following on Saturday's the Hoopla that Corey talked about. The festival begins at one o'clock, Baker Park and the Field House. Someone's welcome to take my registration because I'm gonna be at the state called council meeting in Bloomington. Reburial of the Time Capsule has been delayed to be announced. The four-H Fair is coming up July ninth through the fifteenth. Tonight, I'll be leaving here and going to see the U-Sime reception at the Art Museum. If you don't know who U-Sime is, his family moved from California to Newcastle, Indiana about twenty-five years ago. He's an acclaimed artist. He did two of the album covers for the Canadian rock group Rush, which I have, those albums. Henry County Health Board Meeting's at six-thirty tonight, which Bobby and I will be attending. Our Planning Commission meeting has been moved to next Thursday. Council is to point BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals, open seat hopefully in July. That's been advertised through Ann's office. Brian Deck bowled a perfect nine hundred, three games at the Rose Bowl. Twenty-five people in the United States has ever met that feat. One was last week in the Rose Bowl in Newcastle, Indiana. Attended a Newcastle Main Street event last Wednesday that focused primarily with IU health on mental health and substance use diseases. Several people were there. Butch was there. I was set across from Butch. Henry County Hospital was there, and about fifteen others were there. There's a big Live Well event on July twenty-first covering the same topics of mental health and SUDs, substance abuse diseases, at the First Baptist Church on Thursday, the twenty-first of July, starting at five-thirty. Children and adults will be... Events for young'uns, so whole families can come. There is an outstanding speaker from Boone County that I've heard before that'll be the keynote speaker on July twenty-first at First Baptist. Upcoming council events. Work session on July eleventh, nine to eleven a.m. in here. Paige will deliver her final budget strategy with the one page that is a great guide for going into budget session at our July eleventh work session. Department heads pre-budget chats. I'm... I texted you, but I'm not sure. Are you still on, Susan, for the eighteenth, nine to noon? That's a Monday, so we shortened it that day for those departments that are not... That are not closed on Monday. And then Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, from nine to three-thirty with a lunch break to meet with department heads as we did last year. We good, Susan? Okay, thank you. And that's open to any other council member who would like to attend those. It was very informative and I think a positive thing last year heading into the budget hearings. Our July council meetings on July twenty-eighth at three-thirty. Budget hearings begin eight-thirty to four on August first, third, eighth, and tenth. I did not get any response back from anyone with it on August first? Okay. What I put to the council today is I'm open on that Friday if anybody wants to do the third and the fifth council. Is Wednesday, Friday okay, or is that gonna be a conflict? I know we... You looked at their calendars extensively last month. One reason for that, Debbie, would be that we have two Mondays scheduled, and I know there's numerous departments that are not open on Mondays, so if we moved one of the Mondays to a Friday, and we could... We could leave early on a Friday. We don't have to go till four. We don't even have to go till three, but we need four days. We've... That would be, instead of starting on August first, start on August the third and meet that Friday, but not late into that Friday, the fifth. So it would be Wednesday, Friday, and then the following would be Monday, Wednesday. Is that okay with everybody, or do we need to stick with the first? And it's up to you because this is just... Debbie said she's flexible, but it is two Mondays, and usually we don't go two Mondays because of the reasons stated. Anybody have a conflict on the fifth? Third and fifth instead of one and three. And we can... We don't have to go late on that Friday. I know everybody has their own... Yes, and we know we have to work around your eleven o'clock commissioner's meeting on the tenth. We'd have an early lunch or a break. Anybody not good? Southside's good. Yes, so our first meeting would be the third, Wednesday. Second would be Friday. The fifth. Everybody thumbs up? Didn't we say eight-thirty or nine? Yes, that's correct. August third and fifth, Debbie. And I think that'd work out. Everybody okay? I'll check with Harold, who was aware of the meeting tonight, so he had some health issues recently, so anything else by the council, we asked the public already. Other thoughts, comments? If not, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's removed. Second. Thank you, everybody.